Hey, MV can. Here's a quick look at the June 9th Board of Supervisors meeting. It was really significant because it was the first time the Supes have addressed the protest and talked about the Sheriff's Budget. The Sheriff's Office did not show up. The county staff and the Board itself could not fully explain a specific six-figure budget request from the Sheriff. Katie Rice was repeatedly criticized for a statement that seemed to ask Marin to look elsewhere for leadership. We'll play that full clip in just a little bit and you can decide for yourself what she was saying. On an inspirational note, a bunch of younger voices showed up to ask for change and we'll hear from them too. Speaking of inspiration, put these dates on your calendar. In the next meeting, June 16th, the Board promised to have someone from the Sheriff's Department to explain the request for a half million dollar tracking and surveillance system. Then, the main event, June 22nd, 23rd, and probably the 24th as well, the Board will hear from the public about the entire budget. They have a lot of explaining to do. They're on track to increase the Sheriff's Budget with zero reprioritization. They're on track to increase investments in polluting technologies and make almost no new investment in public health. Let me offer some context for what I expect to see. I'll start with Judy Arnold, the 5th District Supervisor who represents my hometown, Novato. Full disclosure, I like Judy. I volunteered on her last campaign, even producing a video. But Judy has always been Sheriff Doyle's biggest ally on the Board of Supervisors. She gets total support from local law enforcement unions. She is as close to a traditional law and order politician as we have in Marin. Which means, as so many seek to shake up the status quo, Judy will almost certainly be defending the Sheriff and promoting business as usual in Marin law enforcement. While Damon Connolly spoke with conviction for more than four minutes about the need for change, Judy had this, and only this, to say about why so many of us are out on the streets.
Today, George Floyd is being laid to rest. And let's resolve that racism and violence can also be buried as we move forward toward a more peaceful and healthy nation and county. That's it.
I think we can agree Judy's sentiment is good, but right now, with so many of us asking for big change, we need our supervisors to stand up for big change. One of our community leaders, Lisa Bennett, spoke on behalf of ICE Out of Marin.
We have late last night sent you a letter which I would like to read from and I'd like to make a comment or two afterwards, so thank you. Dear Board of Supervisors, we write to you today to advocate for an end to business as usual budget making. Specifically, we call for a fundamental redirection of public resources away from policing via the Marin County Sheriff's Department toward a new, full-spectrum definition of public safety rooted in community care.
That's right, community care. Thank you, Lisa, for speaking up. We'll have more of Lisa's statement in a moment. Now, let me share Katie Rice's statement about leadership in Marin. This is more than a minute, and I think Katie's heart is in the right place, but judge for yourself.
I'm going to leave it to, to the DA and the Sheriff and probation and the public defender and even the courts to maybe think about how we could have a broader community discussion around, around our criminal justice system, what's going on, where there's areas for improvement, what have you. So I wanted, I wanted to make that point. And I also wanted to, and this is also in regards to the many emails we're receiving on, on these two budget items, that, you know, the focus while warranted needs to be actually applied. Our, our focus on racial injustice and inequity needs to be focused across the Board and not just on the county budget or county activities, but frankly, across all areas of the public and private sector. And I, I, I think that I welcome the focus. I think this is really healthy, but I don't want to lose, lose sight of the greater forest, frankly, of areas within our communities, institutional, personal, or professional, that we need to be paying attention to. We need, need to look at where, where we're really missing the boat in terms of the equity. We need to apply the equity lens in all areas of our life.
Here's an example of the community response.
All of the words that you're saying mean nothing if you give the Sheriff's money. Let me say that again. Everything that you've said, I stand with justice, oh, we need to address this, blah, blah, blah. It means absolutely nothing if you give money to the Sheriff's Department who works with ICE. You want to talk about Canal? You've traumatized a whole community with La Migra, with ICE, with deportations. I personally work with newcomer students and deal with their trauma. We have to address this. Even right now, we have immigrant children in detention class, in detention camps, separated. And we still have to focus on Black Lives Matter. Marin City told Marin County what they needed to do on Tuesday. They were very clear, invest in their community, de-segregate schools, invest in education. You guys want to say all of these things and look like the good people in the story, but you're actually really problematic. This is a war against our people. Okay? A war against our people. And everybody in Marin, our voices needs to be heard, and you guys are not doing that right now. And I'm super triggered and I'm super passionate because this is real life. I don't know how you guys are just sitting there in your little offices, just smirking, making all of these faces when people are being hurt. You are systematically oppressing us and you in positions of power need to stand up for us. And, and like people are saying, take a stand. Black Lives Matter, defund the police, ICE out of Marin. I'm done.
Samantha Ramirez was not alone. There were lots of other voices talking about fairness, equity, and standing up for what's right.
I would appreciate it if the Board members would comment on how they see themselves or Marin County going forward and being able to better address issues for the minority community.
I am a resident of Fairfax and Katie, I wanted to respond directly to your comments. I want to thank you for, for addressing these issues, but, and, and I understand your intent when you say we need to focus on other, other organizations. I think it is very important that we look at all the levels of systemic racism and we are bringing our energy to every organization that's impacting people. But I'm here at the County Supervisors Meeting to hear what your role is. And so I want to hear a message from the County Supervisors of Ownership, and I want to know what you can affect and how you're going to affect it.
Katie Rice said that, you know, there, there should be a focus on broader issues other than just the Sheriff's Office. But it is the Sheriff's Office that is cooperating with ICE. It is, and not to get too much into the budget, but it is the largest part of the Public Works Budget. And this moment is about defunding, you know, these militarized systems, refunding in public services that can help marginalized communities in Marin. And the public, I don't think is going to sit back and let you all pat yourselves on the back when we know that there's fundamental issues that are not being addressed by this Board of Supervisors.
You know, I think you actually need to have the Sheriff come to you with a detailed budget that parses out how his officers spend their time. And we, as a community, need to look at that and we can start piecing together, well, is that really the right way to do it? Is there some other way? Because I tell you, we are sick and tired of, of having to get this kind of momentum. We have to have black and brown bodies getting killed on video. That's a sick way for our system to go. We need to have consistent change and you on the Board of Supervisors need to be really taking a bold stand. I think this is, this is, now is the time.
This is an extraordinary time in Marin. I've been here since the Eisenhower Administration, and I can't remember a moment when we've had so much passion and so much opportunity to make change. It's not just the chance to make social change, it's a chance to make green change, which the Board is not doing. In fact, they seem to be going the opposite way, investing in diesel generators instead of clean power. It's a chance to make fair economic change too. And again, the Board has little on its agenda that will help working-class folks in Marin. But enough for now. If you have time, there are many more comments from individuals and groups around Marin. I've put them after this. And again, next week, June 16th, the Board will talk about a half million dollar tracking and surveillance system spearheaded by the Sheriff. And June 22, 23, and 24, the Board will hear from the public about the entire budget. Stay tuned for more about that, and thanks.
Over the last week, we have seen the county, country, and the world take to the streets to fight for justice, for George Floyd, for Black Lives Matter, and communities of color. It is time for action, accountability, and dignity. Institutions throughout our country must step up, make meaningful change, and do away with policies and practices that are unjust or allow for complacency in the face of injustice. Last week, I marched with protesters down 4th Street in San Rafael. What I saw from the steps of City Hall was a picture of beauty, determination, and strength. It was a chance for me to listen and to learn. I hear you, I'm with you, and I will not be silent. Throughout our county, similar scenes are playing out as an awakening takes hold. I am proud of our community, and in particular, our youth, who stood up, spoke up, and organized a peaceful protest. Marin's voice is clear. We support communities of color, and we demand justice. As I joined our youth during the march, I witnessed a moment of humility and courage. A young man kneeling side by side with a San Rafael Police Department officer. The gesture shows a generation ready to come together and heal. Black Lives Matter, 8 Can't Wait, Campaign Zero, and former President Obama have shared guidelines for local, state, and federal change in law enforcement. I'm looking closely at these guidelines. I will be looking into the demilitarization of police, de-escalation, the duty to intervene, community policing, and more, much more, in the coming weeks to better understand where we are in Marin on each of these initiatives. And then work on a path forward with partners, including Sheriff Doyle and other leaders in law enforcement and affected communities. We are living through historic times. It's our responsibility to create positive change. As we address concerns in law enforcement, we must also engage on a broader scale. I'm proud of the work we have been accomplishing in the Criminal Justice and Behavioral Health Committee that I chair. Bringing together law enforcement with Health and Human Services and community partners to address disparities and gaps in our criminal justice system through the lens of equity. Beyond the justice system, we must pursue ways to improve opportunity for our community and workforce. We face challenges ahead in tackling unemployment and uncertainty. Policies and practices may change, but they must be accompanied by the promotion of people of color throughout government, law enforcement, and society in leadership with political and economic power. Recent events are a starting point for an overdue conversation between community, government, and law enforcement. I look forward to a robust discussion with the County Sheriff and community members on where current policies and practices stand and how Marin communities envision change. Thank you.
Supervisor Sears.
So, thank you. So, today is the ninth anniversary of my being the Supervisor for Southern Marin. And I, who would have thought I would have lasted that long? I know. But what I, what I really want to comment on, you know, one of the first things that I was so struck by when I first became a Supervisor was the quality of our leadership at the county level and the quality of our staff. After years in the private sector and at a state, a premier state agency, I came to the county and I didn't really know what to expect. And I was so impressed by people. And this year, and these last six months, has really tested everyone, county leadership and county staff, in ways that none of us ever would have really anticipated. And particularly these last three months, I just want to give a shout out to Matthew and the leadership team and to all of our county employees who have stepped up and done extraordinary work as disaster service workers in just contributing to our community in ways that no one anticipated when they became a county employee. I think it's such a testament to everyone who works at their, at the county and their commitment to our community and their willingness to really go the extra, extra, extra mile to make sure that everyone is taken care of, particularly those who are most in need. So, just a moment of appreciation. I know we're not out of the woods. We still have a lot of work to do on all fronts, on public health, on recovering our economy, on pushing for the equity issues that we've all been working hard on and now want to double down and focus on even more. We have plenty to do, but it's been very reaffirming about the extraordinary skills and commitment and talent and compassion that we have here amongst our county employees to make sure we move everything forward. So, thank you, everyone.
Hi, my name is Pat Johnstone. I live in San Anselmo. I'm here today representing Progressive Democracy for America Marin, a club of the Marin Democratic Party. I was one of the signers on behalf of our membership of the letter that Lisa wrote, and I concur with all the statements that have been made about the Sheriff's Budget. But more importantly, I think we need to really recognize the importance of this time and the importance of the kind of actions that we take. The, the most important is the strongest power that you wield is, is the power of the purse. And I think we need to take a look at the whole budget in this time before it passes and make sure that it is a budget that reflects a commitment to dismantling all the policies that support systemic racism. You know, very often, we just, you know, we, we just don't get to the root of the problem. And, and I don't think this moment should be allowed to pass without us making those kind of real changes. I also would caution us against just helicoptering in with solutions. I would like to make sure that we have real community involvement, understand what our communities of color are asking for now, what they need now. But, you know, it's possible we have to tear this budget up and take a look at it with a whole new eye, because I think the moment demands it. Thank you.
Hi, this is Yovar Medei. I'm the Community Organizer and Advocacy Director with ICE Out of Marin. Obviously, you know, two minutes is a, is a brief amount of time, and I'm not going to be, you know, giving any policy advisements or anything in this brief amount of time. But I just appreciate all of the millennial voices that are really coming to these spaces of power and having their voices heard, feeling mobilized, and taking the energy that has really been seen by all of us in this county back to the boardrooms. That's what we need. We need to keep the eyes on people in positions of power, because, you know, that's really what it's about, is making sure that we're in a representative democracy and the actions of people in power represent the desires of the people they're representing. So, you know, just something for everyone on this Zoom call, please be wary. If the political establishment attempts to take small amounts from the enormous police budgets or Sheriff's budgets and choose, choose to give it to a handful of chosen programs that they view as less threatening to the status quo, and then use that to show us that maybe they've addressed structural racism, institutional racism, or the inequity that we see in this county and has been reported on and by so many studies and research. So, please don't fall for that as, as a movement. And that's all I'm going to say, and we have so much more to talk about that we'll never be able to get to in a public comment, but thank you so much for your time.
I just want to echo what people have said, that we need to do more than talk about justice for communities of color and actually take action, which means taking money from the budget for the Sheriff and diverting it to, you know, the things that can actually help people of color in Marin City and the Canal. And that we need to put, you know, our money where our mouth is, and that we know that there are several things that take money that could really help these communities in Marin County. And then I really hope you consider taking some of the money from the Sheriff's Budget and putting it to, you know, some of the actions that can really help. Because, you know, money is, is needed to help these communities. And putting money in the Sheriff's Department is not going to do that. So, I really hope that you strongly consider taking some of the money from the budget and putting it into action, because, you know, it's wonderful to talk about these things, but really, we need to put our money where our mouth is. And that's how we can, you know, walk the talk. And I want to thank you all for, you know, being people that care. I know that all of you care about the community, about Marin County, and that you do a lot of good work. And so, I'd like you to seriously consider taking money away from the Sheriff's Budget and putting it into, you know, places and, and actions where we can really help communities of color and do more than just talk about racial justice, but actually put our money where our mouth is. And I, I just want to say that, you know, there's been a lot of good ideas about renaming Sir Francis Drake, but, and I agree with that, but those are sort of symbolic. And money is where we can really say that we are serious about social justice. And I think all of you care, and that's why you do this kind of service. So, I just want to reiterate that I really hope you take this kind of action. And thank you for listening to my comments today. This is Sue Saunders, and I live in San Anselmo, California. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, yeah. My name's Libby Rice. I just wanted to chime in and say, I'd love to see a conversation by the Board of Supervisors about renaming Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. I don't think that it's appropriate in this day and age to have a, the longest street in Marin County be named after a known slave trader. Not to mention, we don't even know if he landed in Marin in the first place, but I just wanted to bring that up, and I would like to see that as a conversation that happens amongst y'all in the future. Thank you.
I would like to second that last comment about renaming Sir Francis Drake, Drake High School, and removing a statue of Francis Drake that I believe is erected in San Rafael somewhere. That all needs to happen right away. Also, it feels kind of wild that right now, racial disparity in Marin County, which is a big issue, is not on your agenda at all. And I understand that, like me, there might be a lot of sharpening of thinking and learning and catching up that all of you need to do to really understand these issues with clarity, to be able to speak on them with any kind of authority. And maybe that's why it's not on this agenda, and it's on an agenda that's being crafted for the very near future. I would really like to see that happen. There is, you know, there is racial disparity in many agencies across our county, and I think that the Supervisors, a lot of not only responsibility, but opportunity to lead the way in showing how to address those issues. What are the issues? What needs to be done and how do we do it? I think that that is an important part for the Supervisors to play right now.
I'm Henry Inman, and I'm a resident of West Marin. And I would like to kind of second what a lot of people have been saying about investing in alternatives to policing. I would really like to see the Marin County Board of Supervisors take a stand against funding, further funding the Service Department, which cooperates with ICE, which is an organization which literally has concentration camps in our country, and it's really shameful. And I think that there are a lot of like really exciting and interesting opportunities for community alternatives to law enforcement, which I would love to see, you know, discussed by the Board and invested in further. Yeah, so that's my comment.
I was able to walk with Supervisor Connolly at the protest, and I actually attended three different protests here in San Rafael. And I think that, I think that Marin as a whole, like you Supervisors, would consider yourself white allies in this movement. But unfortunately, it's problematic because you still are benefiting from privilege and from comfort. And so, we're really at a crisis here where people of color feel a sense of urgency. Literally, black people are being murdered. And at the protest, it was said that Marin County, you have had your knee on the neck of Marin City for far too long. And I totally agree with that. And I think what's happening here is that it's good intentions. You, you understand what this country has done to black people, you understand what it's done, but your actions aren't reflecting that. Marin County is super problematic. And so, while you want to walk with us and join and be part of it, you're not really understanding the root of it, because you return to your comfort. Marin is super privileged, one of the most richest counties in, in the entire United States. You know, so I, I think that what Mike was saying is exactly right. How can we improve things when you guys are doing it from your perspective? There's no people of color, there's no black representation in the Board of Supervisors or in elected officials. I mean, you guys have to, have to figure out a solution because it can't just be your ideas. That's just not going to work. What happened in Marinwood last week? A bigot came out. What happened with the politician in Mill Valley coming out? Do we have to really, I, I need to hear more rage in your voice. I need to hear more passion. I need you really to be allies, because unfortunately, you guys are the problem. You guys are perpetuating all of this, even though you want to help, you know, even though you want to help. So, that's, that's all that I have for this item. I'm still waiting for the Sheriff.
I wanted to talk about, say, your position versus what your other departments, how, what they practice, and in which case, you say all the right things publicly, but you have a lot of departments, and they're the ones who, in a way, the public deals with. In particular, let's just say, Community Development Agency, they don't really have to do anything that you say that you want to do to get along with the minorities. They, they practice whatever they feel like doing. They're, they're, they are immune to absolutely anything. They don't, they don't answer to anyone at all. And so, they don't practice transparency. And I could, I could name examples of them simply not even, of them breaking the law and not, and not even respecting a Public Records Act. They don't have to abide by it. Even your, your county administrator doesn't have to go along with it. Even your district attorney doesn't have to go along with it. They could actually break a California law and say, we're not going to, we're not going to follow it or do it because we don't like Mr. Escardel, because he is a person of color, he doesn't have any money, he doesn't know any lawyers, you know, he just not, he is just simply not a person we want to deal with, so let's just ignore him. And because of that, that is discrimination. And discrimination is just another word for racism. So, regardless of what you say, the county of Marin practices racism, it really depends on how much money you make and the color of your skin. Thank you.
I just wanted to, I also like to chime in on the Sir Francis Drake thing. I, I think that's a great idea. I have, I don't think we should be celebrating colonial and stuff. But I, I was calling to also chime in about the Sheriff's Budget. I think with cities around the country making efforts to invest in other services, I know every time I've called the police in the last couple of years, it's been about a mental health issue, somebody who could have been better served with mental health services. I think investing in community, other community services and social supports makes a lot more sense than continuing to invest in more police, especially with the way we're equipping them lately. That's all. Thank you.
I'm concerned over the lack of transparency about the criteria for release of pre-trial immigration detainees who have not been convicted of a crime. As stated in the letter to the Board... As stated in the letter to the Board from ICE out of Marin and others, the budget fails to meet that fundamental test. I call on the Board to require far more public-facing transparency than is currently available in the budget document. Only then can members of the community participate in meaningful discussion about how our taxes are spent. I'm concerned over the lack of transparency about the criteria for release for the plans to keep the incarcerated population safe during the pandemic. Sheriff Doyle, Sheriff Doyle must be completely transparent. Thank you.
This is Simon. I'm a fan of Chin from Mill Valley. I would like the county to start thinking about how can build power for disadvantaged communities? How can it build democratically accountable institutions? How can it give power in housing and business to the people who live in those communities? Marin is the richest county in California with the largest wealth disparity. We're about to go into an economic crisis that will affect poor people the most. We're still in a pandemic that is affecting poor people the most and black people the most. Evictions will rise and businesses that employ them will shutter. I'm sure we can figure this out with all the money churning around in this county.
Uh, my name is Dylan Griffith, a longtime Marin County resident, born and raised. Uh, I just want to say that I stand with ICE out of Marin's call for the reallocation of funds from the Sheriff's Department into the community. Um, to quote Supervisor Connolly, uh, you said earlier, institutions must step up and make changes. And I want to, one, I agree with that, and I think the way that we're asking that that happen is for the Board of Supervisors and the Sheriff's Department to step up by understanding that increasing their funding does not contribute to public health and safety. Um, whether it's through the officers at the protests in Marin City not wearing masks, whether it's through uh, more broad scope things of over policing of communities of color leading to racial disparities, you know, in contact with the justice system. The best way that Sheriff's Department and all other law enforcement entities can support public health and safety is to dismantle the white supremacist institutions that lead to the premature death of communities of color and particularly black folks. So we're asking that those resources be, those monetary and financial resources especially, be reallocated to the community for community-led and community-driven programs and let communities of color who are leading these movements already be allocated those funds so they can use them to support themselves and other communities of color, indigenous folks and black folks. Thanks so much for your time.
This is Lucy Amartel Dow. I'm the Director of Immigration and Social Services. I appreciate the time to be able to speak with you all. And I would like to state that the position of Canal Alliance is that we would like to see a more atomized budget from the sheriff and not only from the sheriff, but also from other law enforcement agencies such as the probation department. So we would like to understand where um, the priorities have been set from a budget perspective. We would like to know um, specifically how we can perhaps use some of that funding in the middle of a crisis. As you know, the Latino population, uh, in particular, has been hit in a disproportionate way uh, by COVID-19 and also elevating issues around equity in the county. And that we stand uh, with the Black Lives Matter movement in terms of understanding how to better address structural issues of racism um, in the county. And I think that we can have those conversations if we come from a place of understanding where um, our dollars are being spent. And if we talk about equity issues, I think it's the advocate's job perhaps to come to these meetings and uh, tell what our position is. But I do believe that as um, elected officers of the county and people in positions of power, it is also your job to have a budget that reflects accountability and justice. And we would like to let you know that that is our position as an agency. Um, and that, and for us, uh, I don't think that there's one um, issue around black justice uh, or race or uh, class that does not intersect with immigration. And we have seen it, we have seen it with this health and this pandemic, and we see it in other structures. And another place where we can look at is, for example, how many Latinos are right now um, in juvenile hall? And what is the proportion in comparison to other uh, communities in Marin County? I have also been in meetings in which I have heard police officers talk about folks in the canal uh, in activities that perhaps in other places would not be constituted as gang activity. Um, I've heard police officers talk about it like that. I have also heard police officers talk about good people and bad people. I have also heard police officers talking about that there is no sympathy for criminals. So when we are raising this issue around systematic racism, we also have to understand uh, there is not a bad apple. This is a problem around where we found our priorities. And I do respect um, a lot of the officer, and as as you know, we have done a lot of advocacy with the sheriff and with other people and other police departments. And from a place of respect for those individuals, I think it's time that we go beyond that and understand all their actions as elected officials we can take right now. Thank you for your time.
My name is Vivian, and I'm a resident of Corder Madera, and I would like to echo what's been said. Um, I'm sorry if it's repetitive, but I think it is really important. And I would like to specifically echo what Samantha said. I also attended the protest in Marin City. And I would really like to see um, Marin as a county really investing in Marin City and really investing in the community organizations there and listening to them and what they want. Um, I would also echo calls to defund the police and defund the sheriffs. I think that um, what we don't want to see is reform that ends up giving more money to um, police departments. What I want to see is a commitment to defund those departments and to divert resources away from them and towards community organizations that genuinely do promote community wellness. So, thank you.
I wanted to thank all the supervisors who came to the rescue to eliminate the the Antebellum South uh, honoring name of Dixie from our school district. Thank you for those who stepped up quickly and responded. And to those who sat on the sidelines, um, it's good to see some of you now here today saying that you you believe in racial justice. So thank you for that. I agree about the Sir Francis Drake Boulevard name change. I think in this day and age, honoring the Antebellum South or slave traders is wrong and that as a community and as a county, we should stand up and change that. I also uh, would like to hear what happened with the Sheriff's Budget item. I I understood that that was on the budget. It sounds like it got moved. I just don't understand the the process by which it was removed today. But $6.6 million sounds like a lot of money um, that could really be well-spent with mental health, substance abuse programs, affordable housing, racism training, et cetera. We'd love to see that money applied uh, in ways that would really bolster the the community health. Um, I'd also want to just, you know, we're talking about a lot of acute threats to people of color now with police shootings. But let let's not forget about the chronic threats. We have our very own Hurricane Katrina occurring in slow motion with eventual flooding from sea level rise that will disproportionately affect Marin City and the Canal District. And when we look at the big picture, the triple bottom line, you know, equity, environment, and economy, doing nothing to protect those communities is the worst on all three Es. It's the most expensive because we'd lose all of that infrastructure and all of those homes and all of the people of color who live there. From an environmental standpoint, those areas would be flooding. It would be catastrophic for the environment. And and from an economic standpoint, it's just from an equity piece, rather, it's tragic. Uh, so I really encourage the county to look at your Bay Wave model and your uh, your vulnerability assessments. And let's get serious about directing some real money and planning to protecting those communities. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Stephanie, and I am a resident of San on Salmo. And as I'm listening to all the comments, I really am wondering about accountability. We are here today to hold you all accountable to the things that we want. And I hope that after this meeting, you don't just go and kind of forget about everything. Um, we hope that, you know, at the next public meeting, we get to hear some of the things that we've been commenting on. So I'm just wondering how you are all going to hold yourself accountable when as members of the Board of Supervisors, you are all white and you are all all have white privilege, and you're all able to go home after this meeting and not have to think about this stuff because your privilege affords you that. So I really encourage you to hold yourselves accountable so that we can see the changes that we're asking for. Thank you.
My name is Emilyne. Um, I'm a resident in Novato. Um, and one thing that I wanted to bring up, I think there's been a lot of great um, comments about how we can move funds and like, um, you know, what our budget looks like and um, around moving funds away from the sheriff. Um, but I spent some time looking through the proposed budget, and one thing that I noticed is that um, there really isn't an itemized budget for the health and human services. And I think a lot of um, the places we're talking about moving budget would fall into health and human services. So something that I would love to see, especially before these um, upcoming budget hearings is um, more of a breakdown of how we actually are spending our money um, on social services um, and homeless and like all of these other things that fall under um, health. So, thank you.
Lisa.
Hi, can you see me? Great. Thank you for um, letting me speak. I'm speaking for ICE out of Marin. Uh, we have uh, late last night sent you a letter which I would like to read from, and I'd like to make a comment or two afterwards. So thank you. Um, dear Board of Supervisors, we write to you today to advocate for an end to business as usual budget-making. Specifically, we call for a fundamental redirection of public resources away from policing via the Marin County Sheriff's Department toward a new, full-spectrum definition of public safety rooted in community care. The county budget must recognize that disaster preparedness is more than a matter of getting ready for wildfire and earthquakes. As we've seen in recent months, our people are living in a public health and economic disaster that can only be addressed through a robust response, especially serving communities that have been disproportionately affected by the COVID-19 pandemic and economic crisis that's followed. As the county's Public Health Officer has stated, the links between a history of structural and systemic racism has left the county's communities of color especially vulnerable to public health and economic disaster. Now is the time to take action to address this situation. This budget fails to meet the fundamental test. Instead, it is a business-as-usual budget that ignores the extraordinary times we are living in. We oppose, in the strongest terms possible, the Sheriff's Budget proposal, which has the audacity of envisioning an increase in expenditures. We call on the Board of Supervisors to recognize that it is time to shift funds from the Sheriff's Department into other areas of the county's budget that truly promote public health and community safety. We call on the Board of Supervisors to require far more public-facing transparency than is currently available in the Chief Administrative Officer's budget document so that members of the community can participate in a meaningful discussion and decision-making process about how our taxes are actually being spent. And I'd like to say that I submitted this letter late last night, and we've continued to gather uh, signatures. We are about over, this morning I received another uh, wow, eighty-seven responses. We have at four hundred and seventy-seven people have signed on to this letter. Um, so you can see the the interest in doing this right. And I know that you want to do it right, and I hope that you will consider the input from the community as far as what they would like to see policing look like here in Marin. And last, I'd like to remind folks that there will be a Truth Act Forum. Uh, at some point, we were going to have one on March thirty-first, and our our goal was to show deportation is a public health crisis. And, you know, actually, it's mass incarceration that is a public health crisis. And I I'm grateful that the supervisors are embracing that framing. So thank you.
Good afternoon. This is Raleigh Cats, Marin Association of Public Employees. Three quick points. Your hearings on the twenty-second and twenty-third, it's imperative that members of the public be allowed to speak after each department presentation. I've been, was told that last year, members of the public only speak at the beginning of the meeting, but members of the public can't have meaningful comments about particular departments if they haven't heard the department presentation. Secondly, on the general discussion of uh, moving money from police, law enforcement services to other services, I think it's important to remember, although the county has the almost exclusive responsibility among public agencies for such things as mental health and other health services. If we talk about expanding mobile crisis, for example, that's a county function. But those pro services would be provided assisting cities as well as unincorporated areas. So I think it's important that if we're going to make these kind of movements, there'll also be discussions at city levels of moving um, money from law enforcement to health and human services, mental health services, et cetera. And then lastly, I want to remember, remind everyone that this November, there will be a critical ballot measure on the ballot for us, the Schools and Community First Ballot uh, proposal, which will increase funding to local government, the schools by uh, re uh, configuring the way commercial property, large commercial property is taxed. And as we're facing the recession, this is a potential additional revenue uh, to address many of the concerns people have expressed today and continue to express about human services, health services, and so forth. Thank you very much.
Hi, um, my name is Mia Lockrits. Um, I'm a resident of Marinwood. I just wanted to express my support for um, Lisa and the ICE out of Marin petition. This is not a moment for business as usual. Um, I just want to say that an increase of the Sheriff's Budget should not be a priority right now. We should be redirecting those funds to um, social services, education, and affordable housing and other services that actually support our community. And I also wanted to talk about, I completely agree with Mike's comment, there should not be cops um, in our school. That does not support uh, students and their safety. Thank you.
This is John Reynolds. Hello, do you hear me?
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I I associate myself with Damon Conley's comment that we have code enforcement included in the budget consideration, a member, M O C. And it's very important that we do that. I of course support uh, changing the allocations to the Sheriff's Department in the county as well, but I'm particularly speaking as a member of M O C to support code uh, enforcement money being in the budget. Thank you.
Here I am. Hi, um, I appreciate um, being directed to the um, specific pages that those of us who are here about Sheriff's Department funding can look to um, and community funding. I am interested if anybody can direct us to the pages in the budget to look at the investments that were mentioned in regards to pensions and potentially other monies. I'm I'm curious um, how Marin County is using money in investments because it is incredibly important um, that we move monies. Um, we defund police to move funding to community programs that actually support the public health and social services that are necessary to heal our communities and also that we divest um, from anything that is causing harm at a meta-level. Um, so I, I'm wondering if anybody can direct us to where we can find information about those investments that were mentioned. Um, and there was a a comment made about being able to be more thoughtful about budget choices when there is more money in the budget. And that struck me as outrageous. Um, I would hope that no matter how much money is available, um, a maximum amount of thought is put into the choices in the budget. Um, and also to echo what someone else also brought up, that it does seem like a a a pretty major flaw that when there, when the economy suffers, we have less funding for health and human services, which is most likely when we need increased health and human services for our communities. And I really look forward to seeing how you supervisors are going to um, respond and act on all of these issues. I'm also a little confused and concerned about the timeline of the budget hearing. It begins in the morning of June twenty-second, and it ends in the afternoon or evening, it sounds like, on the twenty-third. And is is that the total timeline for public comment and changing of the budget language where necessary, which sounds like is going to be pretty major, before voting on the budget? I'm a little confused about that timeline because that seems like a short timeline to do all of that and to get it right, which is very important. Thank you.
My name is Hannah. I live in Mill Valley, and I've lived here essentially since I was born. I am here to urge the Board of Supervisors to reject the proposal to expand the sheriff's funding by over $3 million and instead to defund the sheriff by a significant amount. Experts across the country have urged against utilizing policing as a mechanism to respond to social and health problems. An increased policing only compounds public health crises and terror of this pandemic, especially especially for especially, especially for black and indigenous people of color who are disproportionately affected by the current economic and health emergency and by police brutality. As a resident of Marin, I demand that this money is funneled to uplifting our communities and not the sheriff. Our communities need housing, healthcare and food. And this money in the budget should be redirected into new programs that help for issues such as mental health and physical health as well as housing, community legal aid and human services. Decrease the policing budget and invest in our communities. Additionally, I think that any increase in the sheriff's budget right now is a direct insult to hundreds of thousands, if not many millions of people who are protesting currently in the streets against the murder of George Floyd at the hands of the police as well as continued brutality against black individuals throughout history. I want to reiterate that this isn't an issue of a few bad apples. It's an issue of a corrupt and broken system that can't be simply fixed without training. Missions like Eight Can't Wait or other types of reform are not enough and are not simply solutions that'll work, right? We think that when you have things like 8.8, sorry, Eight Can't Wait, it gives more money and more surveillance technology to police departments and the sheriff. And I don't think that actually is a solution that will work. Also, cities like Minneapolis and DC and San Francisco already have a lot of these things. And we don't think that, I don't think that these are like necessarily police departments that we should be like modeling ourselves against. Instead, consider defunding by a significant amount the sheriff. Think about the county and community of Marin and don't increase their funding. Thank you.
Hi, I spoke earlier. My name is Vivian and I've lived in Corder Madera my whole life. I am also calling for you to not increase the budget for the sheriff, but to please commit to defunding the police and sheriff. As people have reiterated, this is an urgent issue. People are dying and this requires drastic action and not business as usual because the status quo is unacceptable. We're already too late. The protests have made very clear the voices of the public calling for an end to policing. And as the speaker before me, Hannah, just pointed out, reform isn't the solution. I heard Eight Can't Wait mentioned earlier and as she said, it's been proven to not be effective. I'm asking for you to please commit to defunding the sheriff and police and investing that money instead, as people have said, in affordable housing, health and human services and listening to what community organizations say that they need. And we all have like a role to play in this, so please use the power that you do have and please listen to the voices that you've heard today. Thank you so much.
I'm Allison Whitaker and I live in San Rafael. And I just want to say that the sheriff's budget is just an outrage to me that he would be increasing his budget to collaborate with ICE. Many of the immigrants of our community work in our homes, our gardens, take care of our children. We use them and yet we abuse them. It just isn't right and there's so much more we could do with our safety net with that money. And I really, I'm just totally against the increase in the sheriff's budget and I hope that we are able to allocate that money to better, better resources for the immigrant community. Thank you.
My name is Grace. I am a resident of San Rafael and I would just like to echo the thoughts of the previous speakers, asking not to increase the funds for the Sheriff's Department, but instead to defund and reallocate the funds to community services. I think that particularly given the budget constraints going into the next fiscal year, we really have to be mindful about where we are putting our budget and making sure it's going into services that are actually going to help the black people and people of color in our community and everyone, to be honest, because these are services that are going to help everyone. And that is about it.
Hi, I am a, I'm a teacher in Marin County. And I just want to again echo the voices that I've heard today speaking on the urgency to defund the police and to, I hope that the Board of Supervisors will take these calls seriously. I would love to ask for more transparency in understanding what the process will be for the conversations that will take place later in the month. How can the community members who are speaking today get involved in, you know, not just being speaking pieces, but actually helping to really break down this budget? As an educator, my district is facing cutting 48 staff members later this evening. We are facing major cuts. I'm aware that the part of the sheriff's funding will go towards hiring two new school state resource officers to apparently in a anti-vaping campaign here in Marin County that will serve many different school districts. There have been extensive studies on the fact that resource officers in schools actually increase the rates of suspension, violence and expulsion that directly leads into the prison, the school to prison pipeline. So I hope that you will take the opportunity that you have to hear our voices and to consider defunding the sheriff's office to put money in schools. The staff members that are being cut are the staff members who keep our schools running. They are the paraeducators who are taking care of our kids. They are the resource teachers who are helping to make sure that our kids have access to special education, arts funding, music funding. All of that is on the chopping block and yet $1.2 billion is going to hiring two new safety officers to come into our schools in an anti-vaping campaign. It doesn't make sense. I call for the decriminalization of youth. I call for a re-adjustment of this budget and I hope you will hear our calls. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Henry Amon and I would just like to lend my support to the ICE out of Marin letter that was read. And so say that I also, like many other people have said, support defunding the sheriff's office. I think that all the protests that have been happening around the country, they've also been happening in Marin County. And it shows that like local Marin people are ready for the, for policing to be defunded. People are wanting this and I think that it'll be really helpful to divest from the sheriff's office and invest in programs that the community wants. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lucy and I'm a resident of Marinwood. I believe you should reject the increase of the sheriff's budget and instead direct those funds towards social services, education, affordable housing and other services that support our community. And I also want to voice my support for the ICE out of Marin proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Hello, I'm Jason Brissom and I would like to add my voice to the Marin residents demanding that Sheriff Doyle's budget be heavily restricted or eliminated. ICE routinely violates state law and fundamental human rights and yet Sheriff Doyle has a long history of cooperating and encouraging ICE operations in Marin County. Beginning in mid-May, reports surfaced of ICE officers fumigating cells with chemical disinfectants up to 50 times per day. Detainees report blisters, sores, permanent vision loss and difficulty breathing, among other painful, permanent reactions to the constant spraying. Long have we known that ICE is our contemporary equivalent to the Nazi SS. If you've ever told yourself that you'd resist injustice under the Third Reich, that you're better than those that were just following orders, now is your chance to prove it. Defund our racist sheriff and police. Don't be complicit in fascism or systemic racism. You have the power to make a significant change here. Thank you.
Hi, this is Kevin Morrison from Novato. Thanks for having me. I'm wondering if you could at some point in the near future, explain your position on defunding. One of the things that I think people get scared of is the notion that they hear defunding the sheriff would mean somehow there would be less safety in the community. And I think probably supervisors, you all know that defunding doesn't necessarily mean cutting everything off. It means a thoughtful way of moving from the model we have now, which I and many others believe isn't working, to a model that is different and involves some community-based safety that is more effective in many ways and certainly more based in the community. I would also hope that you could ask for detail from the sheriff. Right now, he's got a big budget and almost no detail available for me or anybody to look in and say, oh, here's a piece of his currently budgeted mandate that deserves to be somewhere else. So while I believe there are lots of line items and it's a lot of work, if there could be more detail provided to the community by the time we get back here on Monday of next week, that would be terrific. And then I would also like to ask you to set a target for reducing the sheriff's budget. Just yourselves, each of you, come to the table with a response to the community. If it is no, we are going to give him $6.6 million more and here's why, then I'd like to hear why that is. But if you do have something in mind, ways to reduce the budget and become more responsive to community, that would be terrific. As Lisa Bennett said earlier, we, we don't need more business as usual, especially in these extraordinary times. And I'm hopeful that you can rise to that and be something other than business as usual. Thank you.